Would you like to call this meeting to order? Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Sterling?
Here.
Mrs. Renee?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Chris Arduino, Recording Secretary.
Trelle Yarborough, Secretary of Defense.
Shelley Wagner, Human Resources.
Michelle R, Curriculum and Instruction.
Josh Ray, Business and Operations. All right, turn it over to Jason Boon.
So this evening, we have some fabulous students from Maple Elementary with us and our principal, Mrs. Poole, and I'll let her take it from there.
All right, thank you, Dr. Yarborough, and members of the board. It is such an honor to get to come here tonight and showcase these amazing students. So we started something new at Maple this year, Student of the Month. Hashtag student leader on the back. And we made a rather rigorous criteria to be picked for this. Not every student is going to get this, only about a third of the students in the classroom. It is something that they have to earn. And these students, so we've been, we've done this now for three months. And the criteria, model behavior, no referrals of any type, bus referrals, classroom referrals, zero. Good attendance, they have to be a positive role model, service to others, positive attitude, a team player, respectful to adults and peers, they have to show gratitude, compassion, integrity, honesty, and enthusiasm. And I'll just pass around the form that we use. And then we post this in the building and we make a copy for the parents. And it has been a really wonderful, wonderful event that we've started. So these boys and girls have done an outstanding job. They are the finest, about the finest, at Maple, but anywhere, frankly, in my opinion. So, and I'd also like to congratulate the parents, as I've already told you at the ceremony at Maple, you clearly are doing an outstanding job, or your child would not be getting this award. So congratulations to you as well. Keep up the good work. All right, so Harley Brady, Kelly Phelps, Dagan Smith, Logan Carter, Jordan George, Jasleen Hernandez, Abaya Martinez, Isla Hathaway, Kaiser Kozlowski, Matthew Messina, Jada Smallwood, Adrian Hernandez, Chelsea Ono, Avery Burrwinger, and Zion Harario. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I promise to take responsibility for my behavior. I will be caring, honest, and respectful. Maple School is a better place because I'm here today.
Yes, it is.
So this group obviously is worthy of a photo. So if I get the board coming out, the students, I'm gonna have you all kind of congregate in the middle, but face that way, so families and myself can get a photo of you. So if you want to slide in this way, try. We're gonna turn around and face that way so we can get some photos. You want to slide over and have the board through rounds? You might want to slide in a little bit, watch me do a couple lines. Yeah, perfect, thank you. Awesome, thank you. Families, if you'd like to skip one real quick, I like it on your way.
I know. This year, make sure we'll be able to stand next to these two, they'll be too tall.
All right, point it out in the middle here, one, two, three.
Great job, guys.
Great job, students. Thank you, families, for coming out tonight.
Great job.
To those students out there.
I know.
Keep up the good work.
Good job.
Awesome job, parents, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
You as well.
You too. Thank you. Drive safe, everyone. She's just prepping.
We have one change tonight. We're gonna remove the action item sixteen A for no student discount. Can I get a motion to accept the approval of the agenda with the changes?
Motion.
Second. Mrs. Renee?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye. Turn it over to Dr. Trelle Yarborough.
All right, one of our favorite parts of the, of the meeting, and again, our pledges keep getting better and better, right, including our students and the criteria used to pick them, again, leads us back to why we do what we do with our mission. So the mission of the Harlem Middle School District as a vital part of the community is to help diverse learners realize their unlimited potential by providing an educational program dedicated to academic excellence and the development of strong character, and a safe and respectful learning environment. And I think our kids today embody that, so thank you.
That's true, thank you, sir. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the board meeting minutes, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Renee?
Aye.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, as of, now we're good. All right, we're gonna move on to, there's no comments from the community? To approve of the bills.
All right, just wanted to make a note that everyone left before the bills, now like immediately preceding the bills.
They heard it was gonna be revenue.
All right, the total payables for this period were one million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents. There were two payrolls this period for the total amount of six million, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, for total expenditures of seven million, six hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Split out by fund, the education fund paid six million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents. The tort fund paid thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. The operations and maintenance fund paid three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. The debt service fund paid two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and three cents. The transportation fund paid three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and four dollars and forty-four cents. The IMRF Social Security Fund paid two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, eighty-five cents. The capital project fund paid twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents, again, for total expenditures of seven million, six hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Are there any unanswered questions? And that is it for the bills.
Can I get a motion in a second for approval of the bills?
Motion. Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mrs. Renee?
Aye.
Communications and committee reports. Good evening, everybody. Our next regular board meeting will be February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, right here at six P M. And that is my report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First, I would like to say thank you to the Maple students and Ms. Poole for bringing them in. They did a wonderful job. I love seeing so many kids meet this criteria, and I'm looking forward to seeing the program grow. I want to say congratulations to Harlem Middle School Cheer for placing third at their most recent Oak Forest competition yesterday. They have state coming up this weekend, so good luck to them. Congratulations to Harlem Varsity Cheer for placing third Saturday at Grayslake North on, that was, there were a lot of teams. They did awesome. Hoping, fingers crossed, they make it to state. They've got sectionals coming up, so keep an eye out for that. Congratulations to Harlem JV Cheer for hitting zero and beating one of our local, local rivals at Grayslake North. That was a great performance as well. Congratulations to our alum, Becca Hagerman, Hagerman, on making Team USA Bowling. That's awesome. That's huge, and it's great to see athletes continue, continue on while after they graduate. Congratulations to our regional champs, the Harlem Boys Bowling Team. Couple things to note, this Thursday is the Nick Ten Big Northern Cheer Competition at Belvedere North. It's the last JV competition. It's gonna be a great time. All the local teams, all the Nick Ten teams, all the Big Northern teams will be there competing. So please come out Thursday night. Junior Cheer Huskies Showcase is February eleventh, from one P M. to three P M. At the Harlem Middle School Main Gym, two dollar entry. Come cheer on all of the elementary school cheer teams that have been working so hard all year and are gonna show, show their routine as they compete for a trophy. That's always fun, I've been to those before, it's always a great time. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jill. Have a good week.
Oh, wait, sorry. One last thing, our next Policy Committee meeting will be February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Have a good week.
Good evening, everyone. I wanna dittle everything Jill said about the cheerleaders and the bowling teams.
Becca Hagerman?
Becca.
Becca.
Becca Hagerman. Congratulations to each, to all of you, wish you all continued success. I also want to thank Mrs. Poole for the Maple Shining Star of the Month. Is, that's really nice, and I love the T-shirts, and then on the back of it stating, you know, that they're the Star of the Month, that it's really nice, as Jill stated, to see so many students, and we appreciate, you know, every month we have, every time we have a meeting, you know, different students come in and lead us in the pledge, and wish that continued. And also, I just want to take time to thank my past board members and my current board members. Without you guys, I wouldn't be where I am today. So. In November, I was, I wanna, November, I was presented with the, oh my gosh, I wasn't expecting to do this. But I'm just so grateful, because I've learned a lot from my past board members to the current. Each one of you brings something to the table, and it doesn't matter how long you've been on the board or how much experience you have, you always learn something new from each one of you. And I want to tell each one of you that I appreciate each one of you, past and present, that without you guys, I wouldn't be who I am today. But in November, I was awarded the Illinois State of Board Education Certificate of Appreciation at the General Assembly in Chicago. And then in December, I had to go to Springfield, and I got this resolution from the State Board of Education. And then I also got, oh my gosh, this thing is so heavy. This. From them. I was presented the Illinois State Board of Education Thomas Lee Board of Education, presented for the twenty, twenty twenty-two Illinois Outstanding School Board Member. So this is, oh boy, I have my name on it. And I really appreciate all that you guys have done to help me to be a better person. And I want to thank the community for voting for me past years and hopefully present, future years. But without you guys, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I love this, this district, and I want to continue, as long as possible, to be able to help any and everybody, regardless of what situation or circumstances. I just want to also say to you guys, their meetings will last forever. There, there were people there from all different parts of Chicago and everything, and with, you know, different complaints. But this is their agenda. And so we were sitting there after probably like the fifteenth person came up to state what they were there for, and then the secretary came over, she said, "Once you, I'll give you a present award, you can leave," because we're usually, I'll, I'll say, "Once you, once you present your award, you can leave," because we usually don't leave until like four o'clock. And we were at that meeting at nine o'clock, so I was like, "Ooh, our meetings are nothing compared to their meetings." But it's, it's really nice just to go and see how they operate. I mean, it was just a totally nice experience. And I want to thank Mrs. Clark, I really appreciate you nominating me, and thank all you guys. I just want to say thank each and every one of you. That's all I have to say. Oh. On January twenty-sixth, the Equity and Social Justice Meeting will be at the high school at four thirty, in room one forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Don't apologize.
The rule is you can't apologize.
But I love you guys, and thank you, like I said, past and present, without you guys, I would not have none of this. Thank you. And Superintendent and Secretary.
Yes, you definitely earned it.
And Nikki. Shelley, I gotta keep going, all you guys, thank you. Oh, and Jason, thank you.
Kirk Thompson.
Sure.
If I left off anybody, I'm sorry, but you're included too. So that's all I have to say for it, thank you.
I'll have a short report tonight. Apologies for being late to this particular meeting. The good news is Evelyn goes before me. So I think it's absolutely possible that I might have missed anything or would have not just traced over the same ground of everything she had covered. So congratulations again to Evelyn for that. Thanks for everyone that came up for the last Business Services meeting. It was a very good meeting. We've had a poor turnout, it's great to kind of go through those questions and review everything. And if you're like, "Man, I didn't get a chance to," the good news is the next one is coming up soon, February eighth, right back here, six P M., not six oh six. And come out here, it's gonna be another big one, there's some exciting stuff that we get to see before we get to announce it at the board meeting, so come check it out, it's gonna be great.
February eighth.
February eighth.
February eighth.
I thought you said February sixth.
I think you said six oh six.
Yeah, six, six o'clock, the joke was six oh six, it was late.
I did that in two hours.
Thank you for making me say it again, in case.
Oh, that's an easy way to just make sure you did it right.
Yes.
Kurt, I hit you at six eleven, by the way.
I didn't do that.
No.
Turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Wow. Well, congratulations, Ms. Meeks, well deserved. Well deserved, and thank you for being such a great representative for the school district. We all appreciate it. I appreciate, I sure do appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Poole, thank you for the Maple students coming out to do the pledge. I love the idea of the Student of the Quarter. I think it's a wonderful idea to recognize attendance and, and behavior, and let those kids know that we do notice when they're doing what is right. Along with that, when this group did their school motto, the school pledge, it, it reminded me that pretty much all the groups that come in here now from the elementary school have a school motto or a school pledge. I would highly encourage all of the schools to add to their pledge to not hurt others. I think every teacher, every staff member, everyone sitting at this table should take every opportunity to say to young people that it is not okay to hurt others. Physically, mentally, emotionally, it is not okay to hurt others. I don't think we say it enough. I know we, we talked about the Second Step Program and the social emotional learning that Harlem has committed to, but we can go beyond that and, on a personal level, say specifically to the students, rather than just growing them to be good people. It's okay to say, "Don't hurt other people." I just think it's so important that we say that, because we're missing something somewhere. I would also like to say, in light of what we all saw on that Monday night football game, I don't know if any of the rest of you watch football, but there was a, a young man who suffered a cardiac, a heart attack or some sort of a cardiac event on the football field. And I think that that demonstrated how important it is to have a quick response whenever there is a health event. He was so fortunate that there were people within minutes able to administer the first aid and the CPR that was necessary for him to, to survive that event. And probably he'll go on to live a long and, and healthy life. I encourage the Harlem School District to do, to use all of its resources so that all of its staff are able to respond to any first aid incident that occurs within our schools or in their home lives without hesitation, because they've been properly trained. I feel it's very important. One of the most important things that I think I ever learned in my whole life was first aid and CPR. And I encourage the school district to do the same, to look at every staff and make it available to every staff to have first aid training and CPR training.
Do we have those defibrillators?
Oh yeah, we have AEDs all over the place.
Just want to make sure, I know we did, but I just.
Absolutely, and everybody should be trained in CPR and the use of AED. Everybody should know where that AED machine is and how to use it. And sadly, I come before you today saying, "We're not gonna have an education committee meeting on Valentine's Day." That's just crazy.
Your wife's not gonna be happy.
No, she's not gonna be happy, she'll hit me with a skillet, man. Oh, I shouldn't say that after what I just said. But that would almost be justifiable. If I were to say, "Oh, sorry, baby, I gotta go to the education committee on Valentine's Day."
Slapstick consumption.
What's, what's the proposed date for that, then?
Uh, we will get back to you further. If we have to skip that, I will make sure that all of the important information that we would have gone over during that meeting will be reported out appropriately.
Okay.
Thank you. She wouldn't really hit me with it.
I know, I know that way.
No way.
I'm gonna turn it over to Sharon Renee.
Just hope everybody had a safe and fun vacation. I did. And I just wanted to say congratulations to Evelyn, very proud of you, very well deserved. You're somebody I look up to every day, talk to her every day. And good job to Maple School, love how the kids are learning respect. I think I try to teach even my grandchildren, respect is number one. And keep going. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Turn it over to Dr. Michelle R.
Thank you, I have two items this evening. The first one are our overnight travels. We have on January twenty-first, the middle school cheer team is going to state. They, that is taking place in Springfield, and they're returning on the twenty-second. The next one is state bowling. It's in Fairview Heights. The bowling team would leave on January twenty-fifth and return on the twenty-ninth. The next one is high school cheer. That would take place in Normal, Illinois. They would leave on February second and return on the fourth. And my final one is one that we started just a couple of years ago, and that is the University of Chicago Model UN Conference. Obviously, in Chicago there, leaving on the second of February and returning on the fifth. So these are all travels that we have done in the past.
Thank you.
Any questions about the travels? My second item, one of the things that we have done as part of Education Committee meeting is instead of just having a school improvement plan that is written and then goes to a shelf or stays in the computer somewhere, we've been presenting it. And we've been sharing what everybody's plans are, and some of them have different data depending on when they're presenting. So at our last meeting, the high school, Machesney, Marquette, and Ralston, all presented their school improvement plan, and tonight I'm asking for board approval.
Thank you. Josh Redd.
All right, I only have fourteen items. My first item is a recommendation to approve resolution declaring surplus property for Harlem Middle School. Next is a recommendation to approve facility request. There are two this evening. One is for girls' track practice, and one is for Harlem softball practice, both at the high schools. Any questions on either of those items? Next is a recommendation to accept the FY twenty-two audit by Baker Tilly. On Wednesday, Business Services Nick Cavallieri of Baker Tilly came out and reviewed the highlights of the audit, and you should have them at your place here. So we've already sent that to ISB, and then from here, point board approval, we'll send it to ASBO International to try and get the distributive excellence of financial reporting for the audit. Are there any questions regarding the audit? And if there's not questions tonight, at any point in the future, I'm happy to, to talk through that. Okay. My next item is a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed eight point five million dollars general obligation limited school bonds, series twenty twenty-three, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. This is the last resolution before we sell the bonds. So this is in the timeline of everything that we've talked about. This just lays out how the bonds be taxed and sold and treated going forward on that. So are there any questions on that resolution? And just for the record, this is for the CTE addition at the high school. In case someone wonders why we're issuing bonds. Any questions?
None for me.
Nope. All right. B five is a recommendation to accept the September and October twenty twenty-two treasuries reports. ASB catch up from the audit, so next month will be through December, and we reviewed that. We normally review just the most recent, not that Business Services, but go over the highlights or hopefully not lowlights, but sometimes of those treasuries reports. Questions on it? Next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with World Architects for an updated facility utilization study of the district for a cost of eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Is there any questions regarding updating the utilization study?
And when was the last, this is the same group that had done the utilization before?
They began in two thousand and nineteen, presented it in the spring of twenty twenty, so about three years ago. And so because they've already done all the base work, this is an update based on new enrollment and what are utilization, how we use those classrooms.
Meeting, there's some keynotes that Trel was kind of targeting with that, and then that kind of giving him the keys to kind of help guide where we want to go from where the last superintendent was. So really, just giving us permission, obviously, to conduct the study, to revisit the study, so.
Any questions? Okay. Next is a, excuse me, a recommendation to award a bid for food service equipment with Cook's Direct for a cost of one hundred and six hundred and fifty dollars and one cent. This is for six convection ovens at the middle school, one combi oven at the high school, a steamer at the middle school, and a pot scrubber at the middle school. Just a side note that we talked about at Business Services. Jill Mosher is writing the ISB equipment grant for Machesney, so if we're awarded that, then we begin to cook at Machesney. And we did order, or order a replacement stove for Parker Center, because we talked about that last year, too. I did file up with her based on your question of, and some of these things are at the end of their life, or there's one half that doesn't work and the other half is having intermittent problems, so these are all.
So it's general, in the end, overall, the question was, is it general maintenance with this, this particular purchase, or does it unlock any other capabilities for food services at other schools or improve food services at existing schools?
A lot of these are just end of their lifespan, like the combi oven, we spent six thousand fixing it in the last two years, and there are things that. and there are things that just need to be replaced.
Of course, that's what I'm just looking, we discussed this previously and just kind of looking to see how we can enhance some of the food services that are out there. This is not this, this is just keeping the wheels moving.
This will expand some capacity at the high school based on some of the units that don't function, so. Any questions on that? And that did kind of slightly better than, than our projection of that. Uh, next is a recommendation to approve the extension of banking services agreement with Associated Bank through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, and just a side note, our interest with them is floating on the Fed funds rate. It currently sits at four point three five percent, which is very competitive on liquid cash because banks don't really follow the Fed fund increases, so that's gone well and they do a good job for us.
I think it was the terms, not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah. Any questions on that one? Uh, next is a recommendation to approve award of bid to purchase thirteen Bluebird buses at a cost of one million seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars with Central States bus sales. Just a reminder, we went out to bid for the, um, the front nose transit style ones and they were forty thousand dollars a piece over. So we went back out to bid for the conventional style buses only. Um, Central States bid again and we got prices for gas, diesel, air brake and, um, hydraulic. So, Don, after speaking with Central States, recommended that we buy the gas, um, air brake version of them. I know there were some questions and I hopefully answered those today. Uh, this would be the first, uh, gas purchase of buses, um, that we have made as a group. So, and there was a bunch of pros and, and so this is, you know, just based on this cycle replacement or recommending just for this year on that. They were very similar to, to the diesel pricing on that, so.
Did you have any other?
I'm still concerned, like, we've only used diesel, we have supplies for diesel, the programs with diesel. There's a line that we can't get into and the costs are higher for diesel, but we can walk right up front and get as much gas as we want. That has to be kind of looked at and, and you've answered, and hopefully everyone has had a chance to look at some of the information that's come out. Answered very well. I don't see it as being a direct negative, but I still. And, and it doesn't disclose for buses or computer systems or, or, or anything. It's just hard because we're in a system and then to deviate that system. Now, I know that this is going to be for five years and that lets us go back, so it is essentially a trial run and that's, that's really on my mind as well, but it's still, like, it's, it's, it's a lot of money to try things out, right? Like, and things can change quite a bit, so. The information provided is pretty good, I still don't know how I directly feel with this. The, the other challenge that you called out is based on our system for reimbursements on transportation. If we don't do this, it could potentially cost us more money than doing nothing at all.
Yeah, if we do one of them, yeah.
Yeah, could you give a little more detail potentially on that or to make sure other people know? Because again, if, if all things were equal, I'd say no. I would say we need to stay with diesel. I need to know that by doing this and taking this opportunity, it's not, it's going to still at the point to generate more opportunities for this district than to, to add additional costs, headaches to our staff.
So I spoke with, um, the Central States, the, the main guy that runs that and he said that combined on gas and like propane, they kind of put them in the same group. They actually sell more of that diesel now. He said people that are going with gas aren't going back to diesel because they like the gas. Some, there's some pros and cons of everything, right? Nothing is always a hundred percent clear cut. Uh, gas gets twenty, twenty-five percent less mileage.
I'm saying purely, and, and again, if, if you want to go through that, I think it's good. If you hadn't, if you hadn't read the information to go through it, I think, at least personally for me, is based on your, your layout, your chart of we buy X amount of buses this year and then the return comes through.
Sure.
If we do not do that, what is the net loss? Does it push us back a year? Does it actually cost us money? Because presumably, you know, replacing your buses is going to be important, but the difference of one year may not be as critical for the utility of it. But financially, where does that impact us? Like, what's the cost of doing nothing is what I'm really looking at for this year and then putting ourselves in line for the diesels to get the, the original plant diesels.
And we can, so when you say.
So, it, was it delay, is it cost? What is the thing that's driving the initial part of that?
So one of the things that's delayed is the conventional or the transit style diesels. Those, they're only making, like what we would, we're normally buy the ones that were forty thousand or that we probably weren't going to do anyways. We can get the diesels of the conventional style and gas similarly. And I tried, I tried to say that we can get those, but when we look at them side to side between, um, and, and I attached something that was like pros and cons of gas or cons, or pros of, of gas. You know, it's the twenty-five thousand upfront. We don't have to deal with the DEF system, because like, what he was telling me was you only have eight quarts of oil in, in gas versus twenty-four on diesel. He said if you replace a diesel engine, it's up to thirty thousand versus eight for gas. He said they're quieter, the heat up better, they don't have as many cold, cold temperature startup issues. You don't have to run them on a heater block. And he's told me that the trade-ins were comparable or slightly higher than diesel. So, when I looked at all those factors and, and we do have fifteen of the smaller, they're not full buses. We have Chevy engines on those, these, these would be Ford engines. So, we would need a few extra filters, um, but it wouldn't be dramatic of what we'd need with that. I, I think it would give us a really good insight into, you know, if we always do what we've done because that's how we've always done it, you know, if, if people really are, if the trade-ins are higher and we have, and there are a bunch of benefits to it, like you said, it's, it's one shot of five years. And we, we can do diesel, like, in, in my thought, if we do one of them, but when I, when everything's equal, we look at them, we slightly lean towards gas, it's not the end of the world if we do either. If we do none, then, then the snare that comes up is what happens in the future? Do we do two sets next year? Do we do nothing? Because if we do nothing, then you miss a set of the cycle that doesn't get any, like our trade-ins are another year older and then you have another fifteen buses that essentially aren't getting any state reimbursement on that. So, we're a handful of years away from them essentially just paying for themselves and not being in that cost. So, in my opinion, you know, I would only, I would only recommend holding if there was something so financially egregious that we just absolutely couldn't, but, um, you know, we got, these prices are in line with where we are. Now, these are a little bit smaller buses and it's not a hundred percent apples to apples because these are the buses that we need this year. But if we do gas, then we get to see what that's like and all the benefits that we listed there. If we do diesel, then we can do diesel and we can, but either way, we should do something, is, is my thought on that.
Okay. No, that, 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 that helps. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a hard decision when you're, you know, this is not, do we try one brand or the other? You know, it's one for seven million dollars to, to try it out. I know the, the fact that eventually after five years, we'll be selling these still, you know, at some point to kind of help recoup that. I know the financial that comes through to that, so those do help. Don did of course sign off on it. And he's the one that's ultimately at the end of the day, I'm not going to be out there changing oil.
Yeah.
Um, but those are the concern him and his team needs to be for making this sort of decision, so.
Well, like you said, talked about Don, I mean, Don lives this and, and there are times when I say, well, what about propane? And he's like, no, for this reason, this is. So, when, because when we got these bids back, I, I wasn't pushing either. You know, I said, call Central States, talk to them and they had that conversation and came up with, I think the gas ones are slight, slightly better deal at this point. So I was like, okay, let's go with that. So, I, I think we'll be okay, I think it all.
Sure, this is our first, I mean, Rockford has a mix of diesel and gas, so it's not, it's not unheard of scenario.
They have propane too, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's still making sure that while we had one system that works, as I just mentioned, if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Sure.
This is adding in change, we just have to make sure that the reason we're doing is reliable. I think most of those have been at least been answered, but.
Correct.
Just, I would just say, you know, we still need to watch and monitor this best we can. And this is our chance.
I can talk to Don too about really maintaining the, what, what do they look like cost wise as we use them?
Yeah, I mean, and to your point, if, if these are that great and, and we start to say, we start replacing these, then let's look to it next year if we want to do it, we can go gas or diesel, let's have that information.
Because if you're oil and DEF.
Thinking about the different equipment, like all our tools, I mean, there are some.
Yeah, there's tools that could be different and, um, I mean, I've, I've asked other mechanics, you probably guess who? Like, just knowing where some of those differences really are and it was like having the, the, less the warranties covered, right? Some of those bigger parts are not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Just your general maintenance parts and where you're going to store that and making sure the right team members are working on what. So, there, there's the legitimate challenges. I think most of that still comes down to if the financials still work out is that Don signed off on this basically. He's got to be, him and his team have to be responsible for it. And I expect that if there are any challenges or issues that come to it, we can hear about it right away, right? So we can.
Sure.
We can correct those or make corrections, but just to make sure everyone's aware that this is not a normal bus purchasing. I think it's pretty obvious the reasons why we're looking in this direction, uh, before we go, that's all.
So just to be also clear, when you say normal, the quantity is the same and the brand that.
Everything but the, what it burns.
Correct, yep. Are there any other questions on that? Thank you, Kirk.
No, no, hey, thank, the, the, the ability of you and Don to answer the many, many questions that I've come up with makes it incredibly helpful and, and I, I have more confidence in my decisions when I have those.
Well, I thank you for those questions because anything that I was wanting to ask was already listed out.
Yeah, I am not a mechanic, but you know, I got to make sure everything's covered, so.
You did a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My next item is a recommendation to approve the purchase of playground equipment, including removal, installa- and installation with imagination through Sourcewell Cooperative at a cost of seven hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars, paid with S R two funds. I al- am also making the recommendation that the board note that, um, I'd like to consider this an emergency purchase just because of the timelines, like we have the co-op piece. But, um, for example, when we look at Maple's playground, we ordered that, uh, it took a full year for that to come in. Uh, this is S R two, these playgrounds need to be installed by September thirtieth. Right now I'm being told June, but we were also told, you know, I, they'll be here this summer and I think right, if we act right now, we will be able to get them installed in time. But, I mean, this is a big order and like, we're ready to place the order like tomorrow if the board approves this. This is a combination, just a few side notes. Uh, Mickey and I went and walked all of the playgrounds and then Mickey, Trell and I walked with the imagination rep and laid out what all of these look like. We talked to the principals, we sent the renderings to the principals to look at, um, and had all of those conversations. So this is a, a combination of some are full pull-up and replacements, some are additional pieces. In addition to this number, you know, the maple number's not in here because we already bought that playground. That is being installed on spring break, right? So, um, in addition to this, there's going to be, we'll, we're going to replace some parts on ones that we didn't fully remove. It also includes, uh, mulch. We have two playgrounds that have pea gravel, um, which needs to be removed and, um, new mulch put down. So, this is a, a major step for the kids in this district on what they play on and it's been exciting, but a quick, uh, amount of work to do. So, um, what else? September thirtieth is deadline, I think I've made note of all of those items. So they gave us the co-op pricing plus like another fifteen percent off of that and I believe that this is, this is the lowest pricing that we can get. Uh, the installer made sure to note that the margins were really small in terms of what was being marketed on the playground. So, I feel confident. Yes, the installer is local in our tax base also, which is a major positive, so.
I just like to thank you and Dr. Earp with, with all your work on this. At the end of the day, if our, our board approves this, this is great for our kids and our community, I believe, so.
And one other note, S R has already approved and set aside these funds, so. Are there any questions on the playground?
Um, I have one. Anything that we remove, um, will there be anything that can be like salvaged and maybe donated to, uh, a school that may not have the funds?
I can ask. Um, some of those playgrounds like Marquette are twenty-five years old and there's not much with that, but I, I can ask what.
Right, you can check.
What that really looks like.
Honestly, say, if a frontline organization does that type of stuff, they do, moveable type of things like that and, and the recertification for the United States is way more difficult than going overseas and so, I do know of a company, a company that would take that and send them overseas because they can recertify and, and they're allowed to be, um, put in there or something.
And they would take this?
I would, well, I could before, but I would assume that they would.
No, no, you're on record.
I would assume that they would, but again, it's, it's the local install, like going to another school in the area gets a lot more complicated because of certification requirements in the United States and so, it just doesn't apply. But there are companies, yes, that would probably take that stuff.
There are some of those that could probably go, but like Maples was in such a condition, Marquette's that you wouldn't want to move them. But some of them, yeah, possibly, well, it's, well, yeah, it's a good point.
Good idea.
Where are the digital photos? They were so great behind.
I have a stack.
At the business services meeting.
This is why I had to go to the business services.
And I've been waiting to bring these off.
All right, all right, I brought them.
All right.
Sorry.
I mean, to call out, I mean, you buried some leads there, there's some great stuff. The inclusion of, uh, different, uh, equipment that can be used by everyone is fantastic to take a look at that. I'd also call out, good job going for the emergency on this because if you don't think that everyone else in every other district is doing the same thing we are, to get these S R funds utilized for something as creative as this, I think you're wrong, so.
You know, to your point too, there were a couple buildings, specifically Windsor, that this is all new play space for some of the programs that they have there for kids, for very specific.
So the STP program, um, we, the playground is specifically designed to meet the needs of our students who are in that program and then at, um, at Welsh Park, when Josh and I were visiting, a couple of the purists had said there was not much for our students who were, um, in wheelchairs and so we added some for them as well.
Cool.
Yeah, if we get, again, if these could be made digital, these should, and this gets approved, these absolutely should be shared. It should be shared with the community, these are fantastic.
I think we'll have updated ones with colors because we've had the, everyone selected their colors, I believe, so.
Oh, they did.
So did you change the colors from what we saw?
Some, yes, some no.
Right. We allowed each building to choose which color schemes that they like. Some of them really liked the ones that were chosen and others, um, wanted to do some selecting to, um, match what's already at their, um.
It's gonna be nice too.
So we're, we're also gonna put mats under all the swings because what we saw were the swings were getting really, really, in one case Windsor actually lowered their seat to ground level because it was so low underneath. So, you know, I think, especially with the new mulch and everything, they're gonna, they're gonna look like brand new play spaces, so.
They're gonna have these slides.
I want to go play.
Right?
You're not gonna have that, that torture chamber, that, that'll.
I think they need to bring back the old Windsor tire. It was just a tower that was like twenty feet tall of just tires.
Rockcut's got the swing with rollers in it.
Like I said in business service meetings, we have to watch out for the mayhem. People riding by and looking at the swings and not paying attention, it's really nice.
It looks like an obstacle course.
The colors, I love the colors.
That'll make field days even better, they can utilize the playground too.
It helps the schools, it helps the community because there's so many other just community members.
Oh, yeah.
Even Tammy had more time, so she got to do, let the kids pick colors and.
Oh, that's awesome.
Does this, this is just our playground, what about Olson, I know Olson, like their soccer field needs to be resurfaced, I mean, it, it does a way, like you can watch kids actually like lower heights.
So, this doesn't include that, but what it does include at Olson is their swings are over by the solar and their playground's weight, so they're moving the swings as you can see and attaching it to the play area there, so.
Consolidated in one area.
Yeah, otherwise supervision wise, it's a hundred yards that way and then, so we tried to address some of those things. But yeah, well, we can take a look at that.
Cool, thank you.
Are there any questions on the playground, other than?
You guys did a good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Color is just, ooh, I love the colors.
I really like the inclusivity for kids with, with needs that are.
That does that, I think it's very cool.
Yep.
We're gonna make that upgrade and, and get everything advanced.
Do it right, so, yep, everybody can be involved.
So my next item is a recommendation to approve the Justin's Yearbook Agreement for Harlem Middle School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per copy. That is a three percent increase, which these days.
Ain't bad. Inflation's at seven, they're at three, we're good.
Any questions on that? Okay. Next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Frontline Education. Okay, next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Frontline Education for Recruiting and Hiring Solutions Software for a trial period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. At a cost of five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. There's a memo from Dr. Wagner on there, if you have any questions, I haven't answered them.
Just hope it works.
We'll see.
Yeah.
I'll be really excited if it does.
I'm sure we'll have lots of reports if it does.
Yes, yes you will.
Good, all right. My next item is a recommendation to approve agreement with Creative Teaching Techniques for Professional Development Workshop Presentation to Saint Bridget School, K eight staff. At a cost of five thousand dollars, paid with Title II funds. Any questions on that, P D?
Well, use their phones.
All right, my last item is a recommendation to approve agreement with the R O E for, for professional development training at February seventeenth. At a cost of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, paid with Title II funds. And Kurt, that first item was with travel, but they're coming from the suburbs, so.
Oh.
So, yeah, it's the only one that they didn't include the travel and I just wanted to be transparent in the memo, that's why I said plus travel.
Perfect, it was because most of them are built in, so.
Any questions on that, P D?
I, I have questions.
Sure.
All right. So looking at this smorgasbord for fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. Are teachers picking individual classes?
Yeah, so we have to have, when we do something like that, we have to have over twenty sessions each period so that there's enough for the teachers to be able to choose. Because there's just so many teachers that, um, that need to have a place.
Can you do something for us or the high school? Can you give us a breakout of how these are utilized? Like where the, the people went or signed up for?
Oh, absolutely, after they choose their sessions, I can let you know exactly how full each of them were.
Cool. That's my only, my only question is just to see how that, just to wonder how it breaks out, you know what I mean?
And then there's some that, you know, individuals within our district are doing as well that are not, but you, I'll let you know how all of those go.
All right, just for, just for knowledge purposes, just, just interesting.
You're just curious on how many teachers are doing yoga, I get it.
Just in morning meetings, you know.
That was one of the most interesting to be on there.
Yeah, I did see that, I was like yoga, my head just turned like that, I was like, okay.
Yeah, no, I get it.
All right.
Any other questions on that?
Sorry.
If not.
You get through all words, eh?
That is my report.
Yep, turning it over to Dr. Shelley Langner.
All right. I have the recommendation to approve the personal agenda and addendum. This evening we have fifteen employments for transfers. We have one correction out of the twelve resignations. So if you look at the last entry on, um, the resignations as a retirement for Janet Stuckey. She is retiring from Marquette, it says Rock Cut, she's retiring from Marquette. Carrie had emailed us about that earlier, I don't know if you saw that, Chris?
Yes, I did.
So we could correct that, no, that'd be great. Um, we have two Federation Bank requests for two employees. And we have one new position proposed from Heidi Lang. There's a need for an additional parent educator at Rock Cut due to the enrollment of a new student who requires individual assistance in order to meet their I E P minutes.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Turn it over to Dr. Troy Yarborough.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, I have two things under my report, um, Freedom of Information Act request dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. From Academy Research Group regarding the list of district employees with allowable information. And the district response dated December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two in compliance, so that was good. And then we have a recommendation on for the board to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Harlem Federation of Teachers and Harlem Federation of Support Staff. Regarding support staff retirees being paid two dollars more per hour than the base rate and substitute rate. Um, for me, um, you know, just, just, just me talking, um, you know, this is a, a great way for us to incentivize our staff who retire to come back. Right, and who all already know our kids, already know our, our, our staff, our buildings. Um, and to be able to come back and, and, and help us, you know, at a time where they can go anywhere they want to go. Maybe we want them to come, come back here, so just throwing that information out there. And that was my report.
Any questions on that? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Need a motion in a second to approve personal agenda and addendum.
Motion?
There is no addendum.
No addendum.
No, no.
No addendum.
Sorry.
All right, well, motion with no addendum.
I, uh.
I didn't clarify.
If you write it down there, I will put it, I will read it.
Kurt, you're first?
Sure.
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve student travel requests?
Motion?
Second.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve facility requests?
Motion?
Second. Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Thirteen A, can I get a motion to approve school improvement plans? Harlem High School, Ralston Elementary, Market, Marquette Elementary, Machesney Elementary.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Thirteen B, can I get a motion to approve resolution declaring surplus property?
Motion?
Second. Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve acceptance of FY twenty twenty-two audit presented by Baker Tilly?
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Thirteen D, can I get a motion to approve resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed eight million, five hundred thousand general obligation limited school bonds. Series twenty twenty-three for the purpose of increasing the working capital cash fund of the district. Providing that the levy of the direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds. Authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve the acceptance of September and October twenty twenty-two treasurer's reports?
Motion?
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve an agreement with Bold Architects for an updated facility utilization study of the district for a cost of eighty-one hundred dollars?
Motion?
Second.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thirteen G, can I get a motion in a second to approve award of bid for service equipment with Cook's Direct for a cost of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and one cent?
They couldn't have taken off the one cent.
Right.
They rounded up.
Motion?
Second. Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the extension of banking service agreement with Associated Bank through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Thirteen A, can I get a motion in a second to approve award of bid to purchase the thirteen Bluebird school buses for a cost of one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars? With Central State's bus sales.
Motion?
Second. Mr. Thompson?
Oh, I'm so glad it started with me. Yes.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Right.
Thirteen J, can I get a motion in a second to approve the purchase of playground equipment, including removal and installation with the imagination through Sourcewell Cooperative. At a cost of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, paid with S R two funds?
Motion?
Can we just make a note that that's the emergency approval on that too, just for the record?
Yes, make a note to the, in the board that this is going to be for emergency, emergency approval. Thank you for the mining.
Okay, need a roll call? Oh, they already did, okay. Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve Johnston's Yearbook Agreement for Harlem Middle School for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year at thirty-eight, eighty-eight per copy?
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Thirteen L, can I get a motion in a second to approve an agreement with Frontline Education for Recruiting and Hiring Solutions Software for a trial period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. At a cost of five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents?
Motion?
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mr. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Thirteen M, can I get a motion in a second to approve an agreement with Creative Teaching Techniques for a Professional Development Workshop? Presentation to Saint Bridget School, K through eight staff at a cost of five thousand dollars, paid with Title II funds?
Motion?
Second.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thirteen N, can I get a motion in a second to approve an agreement with the Regional Office of Education for Professional Development Training on February seventeenth at a cost of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, paid with Title II funds?
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Thirteen O, can I get a motion to approve memorandum of understanding with the Harlem Federation of Teachers and the Harlem Federation of Support Staff. Regarding support staff retirees being paid two dollars an hour more per hour than the base rate substitute rate?
Motion?
Second. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks? Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
All right. Are there any announcements and discussion?
Um, I have an announcement, Harlem Athletics Page has a new Facebook page. It's under Husky Nation, so make sure you go and like that and give it a follow so you can stay up to date on all things athletics. It's Husky Nation, it's the name, you have a new Facebook page. That's all I have.
Okay. I need a motion in a second to go into executive session to discuss employment of personnel five I L C S one twenty dash two C one.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Vannery?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Jill Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Uh, five minutes?